Remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you. Select board meetings can be viewed by going into the cable videos icon on the homepage of the town's website.
All right, very good. We have a number of items on the agenda tonight, beginning with one near and dear to my heart in the Topsfield Playground Committee. Kevin, would you like to introduce what it is we're discussing tonight?
So I will be very brief and hold hand this over to Jen in a second, but this is a fundraiser that is being proposed and more than proposed, that's taking place on the common soon, and it is a fundraiser directed towards the pump park, which the town, the select board has has previously voted favorably to support. And hopefully with this event, there will be, it's not every day we get sirens here outside town. With this, it would help obviously support the initiative and raise the necessary funds to make the project a reality. But there's a big thank you for the creativity to host the event. And I'm sure they'll talk a little more detail about what it entails. But it's it's should be should be a fun event and we're excited for it. So with that, I'll hand it over to the Playground Committee to speak more to the event and the request for the liquor license.
Thanks, Kevin. We're grateful for all the support we've received and we're really excited about this event. As you mentioned, it's the the proceeds from the events and the excitement around the event, hopefully will generate more interest and support for the pump track project at Bear Hill Park. We are underway with our fundraising. We we have made a small dent in some of the in what we need for funds, but we still have a long way to go. So I think advertising this over the next couple of weeks will really be helpful to get a good group of people there and excited about the project to come. I have to give a lot of thanks to Megan Richards, who's been vital in helping get this ball rolling and really spearheaded the planning of the event and has done so much legwork with this that I owe a lot to her to for for the vendors and the partners that we have to be at the event. So we're excited because there will be butter your biscuit food truck there and they are donating some of the proceeds back to us as well as a live band. And also Ipswich Ale Brewing Company will have their beer truck and we know that they were a success when they helped out in the past at, I think it was one of the markets, the summer events. And they're willing to donate $2 from the sale of each beer to back to the project. So that's a really helpful thing. And we've worked and met with Chief Hovey and Chief Collins Brown and talked a little bit about what the plans are and we have support from them. And we're very excited. We're going to host raffles that are related to biking. We're going to have some biking related activities and bike decorating booth. And we're asking for suggested donations. We're not requiring anyone to pay an entry fee. So this is really a give back to the community in a fun way to get excitement around the pump track project and hopefully in the process we'll we'll get some more donations and involvement. I think that's all I wanted to say about the event. Megan, do you have anything to add? That I might have missed? She's really our
No, I think you covered it very well. We're just obviously hopeful that we can get the liquor license approved so that Ipswich Brewing Company can sell beer at the event. They are assuming it's approved, planning to bring their pump or tap truck. And they will have three types of beer available. Obviously, nothing no, no double IPAs or anything crazy like that, because we discussed that it's a family oriented afternoon event. So we're keeping it very, you know, light beer casual. You know, they're very mindful of that and they're excited to support the pump track as well, assuming that we are approved.
Jen and Megan, a quick question for you. Can you just highlight what it is you're trying to raise again? I know we talked about the capital number that you're you're gunning for to you know, in this whole thing, but you know, what is what is that number? And what are you hoping to bring in from this event?
$50,000 is the goal.
That's what I thought. Okay. Are you trying to raise $50,000 during this event right here?
No. That's a long shot.
Yeah.
We have a lot of, we have a lot of different approaches that we're taking to raise different funds. We've applied for grants, for example, EBSCO generously donated $5,000 towards the project. We are approaching businesses in town as well as individuals and families. And, you know, we have a lot of different approaches, but this is just one of those means that we're hoping will generate the funds needed to reach our goal.
Thanks.
All right, I know that we have a number of motions in front of us, but the only one we've discussed so far is the liquor license. So we'll start with that. Before we even go to a motion, are there any more questions around this?
Not around this. This sounds like a good event and a great way to get excitement for the project. So this is not directed at Jen or Megan, but just to reiterate that we had said in the past, our Wednesday work sessions, we're not going to be used for votes and we have five votes before us tonight. That this is supposed to be kind of a talking session, a more in-depth discussion on issues that come before Monday meeting. So I would stress that we try to stick to that. We have an April 24 meeting. We canceled the April 3 meeting. But just so that any votes that we're taking are at the Monday meetings.
Okay.
Megan and Jennifer, does that satisfy your time schedule?
So I think the reason we were put on this agenda after I spoke with Sam was because of the timeframe it requires for once, I don't know, there's a secondary approval that needs to happen once select board votes on the liquor license, it goes to another organization. Is that true? The M A B?
No.
Something? Oh, no. Okay. So I was under the impression we were in a time crunch because it was supposed to be 30 days prior to the event. So that's what she put put us on for tonight.
I would say since we're here and we've discussed it and you guys have taken the time to be here, I don't mind voting, but this is an awful lot, just and I'm speaking to the board, you know, for us to be voting on when we could have gotten together April 3 and we do have the 24th. So again, just to be mindful, but I don't mind going ahead and voting tonight since you're both here.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions on this? Normally we have like, I forget what the term is, but it's like a signature from the chiefs. It's a, it's like, it's on there?
Yes. Yes, both Chief Hovey and
Chief signed it.
Oh, right. Yeah. Okay, perfect. And then the other thing, it's a family friendly event. It's on the on the common. Are there going to be like bean bags or what are we doing to keep the kids out of the streets?
Yes. So we have a lot of activities planned. We have an interactive ride zone. So families are going to be able to bring their bikes and they'll have different obstacles that they can work on. We're going to have a bike decorating station. We're going to have cornhole. We're going to have some demos and some actual races and events that people can win different prizes. And things of that nature. Hopefully a tricycle race so that Lynn can be a two-time champion, but just throwing it out there.
I'm there. I
This wouldn't happen with any families from Topsfield, of course, but say there were some interlopers who are more interested in their beer than in watching their own children. I mean, it's public space, but I am, is there going to be somebody who can like keep an eye on? And I don't know, it's not our jobs to parent other people's kids, but I'm concerned just with with Main Street there.
I think generally and I could be wrong, so I'll just say what I think is the case, but when we have events on the common, don't we close the portion of Main Street just between the two? We don't? As a matter of course, I see Lynn nodding no.
Unless it's specified, and I don't think the chief did. Did he?
So what we did last year as an example during the homegrown markets and it was referenced earlier, it's probably a very similar type of event in the sense of in the September one. We had a concert, a band playing on that, a Beatles cover band, actually, on that September event. We had a really great crowd because they they brought a following. And then in addition to that, we had the Ipswich Ale Beer Truck there selling 12 ounce cups of beer. And we spent extensive time because it's the first time we were doing this on the common with both police chiefs and Gary Wilds, our highway superintendent to identify the restrictions or any type of barriers that were necessary. The the way that the event was structured with the vendors on the sides and with some additional signage on the round with the flagpole is just past that where the event was ended. Just saying, no, no, no alcohol beyond this point was sufficient for the fire chief and police chief. And so the idea would be that a similar sort of setup would be would be incorporated with any future events if possible on the common. And my understanding is I think there's going to be a similar type of setup for this event as well.
Yeah, it's less it's less a concern about the alcohol leaving for me. I don't know if we could just string up a rope along that side or again, it's not our responsibility to parent other people's children. I get that. I just don't want anything bad to happen because someone's more interested in their beer than their children. Which could granted happen at any of these other events. I just think that the family focused event, my guess is we're going to have a higher ratio of children to adults.
Couple of couple of comments if I may. I'll be very surprised if there's not police presence at this event. Because almost always there is a policeman that is designated to hang around. I'd be very surprised if that doesn't happen. In addition, since I have been designated as the select board historian, I would ask you guys if you know Rob Martin, who is the owner and manager of Ipsa Jail.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Well, he is, he and his family are longtime residents of Topsfield. His mother and father now live in Boxer. Rob Martin has been around town for 40 or 50 years by now, very involved in Troop 81, Boy Scout troop. Good guy. If you get a chance to say hello to him and introduce yourself to him, that would be a good idea.
So to answer your question, we do, the chief did say that he would have barricades and things like that ready. Depending on the number of people that did show up at the event and there would of course be a police presence. But in order to save the organization, since we're a nonprofit trying to raise money to have to pay for a detail if we don't meet that number of people, everything's going to be ready just in case, but it's
I see.
You know, it's going to be there. And also before Stephanie left, and I'm happy to coordinate with Sam, she said that we could use the no alcohol beyond this point signage. So that we could, you know, repurpose those for the event. And I'm sure we can come up with some creative way to set up the tables and things like that to really encourage people away from that busy street.
Awesome. Thank you.
I, and just to add to that, I did have a conversation with Chief Hovey when he signed the liquor license application and we discussed that he did. He did say that he'll be present on site. He'll probably have one or two someone else with him. They may bring the dogs. He was like, we'll make sure we're there kind of hanging out near the near the edge by the road. It's not an official detail, but he definitely said it's not like we're going to be on call. He plans on being there.
Thank you.
All right. Any other?
He's not going to be in that tricycle race, is he, Jen? I don't think I want to go up against chief.
Can I bring my own tricycle? I feel like I might go get a bigger sized one. Are there any other questions on the liquor license? All right, can we move to a motion then?
Sure. Motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Topsfield Playground Committee. For the bikes and bites at Town Common in Topsfield, Mass. On May the 6, 2023, malt beverages will be served between the hours of 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we can move to roll call vote. Mr. Jackson. Mr. McDonald.
Hi.
Mr. Brown.
Hi.
Ms. Bermudez.
Hi.
I am an I. That passes. So we have two sign questions in front of us. Jen, Megan, who's going to tackle these?
Yes. So these are for the banners that we, one is going to be at the actual Bear Hill Pump Track Park so that people, when they're driving by and see all this construction and activity going on, just a good way to let people know that may not know what's going on. So that's the coming soon banner. And then the other one is specifically for the bikes and bites event that we'd like to put on the actual common to promote the actual event. And that one, we have left space on the bottom left because we're hoping to be able to add some of our corporate sponsors, for example, EBSCO. As part of their donation, they would like to be recognized understandably. So that banner isn't quite finalized, but the look and the layout, the only thing that will change is a couple other sponsors slash partners, which we're happy to run by you if we need to before. But again, in the interest of time, since we're under a month, we'd love to be able to get it printed and up. If possible, and there won't be any DraftKings or anything like that on there, just all, you know, local business.
Couple of questions about the banners. So the first one to be placed at the town common. When do you envision it going up? Because traditionally we've only allowed banners to be up for two weeks. So this says it will come down on May 6, but when would it be going up?
So the one at the town, sorry, that's the one on the common?
Yes.
Yes. So we were hoping it hasn't gone to print yet. So we were hoping as soon as we got it printed, maybe we could, but if you would like us to only do it two weeks prior, then obviously we would look at two weeks prior to May 6.
Which is the 22nd, which is a week and a half from now. So
Thank you. So we could, we could do that at that time. Because that way, that would be great, actually, because it coincides with the Earth Day and town cleanup. So get a lot of viewing.
Okay, that sounds good. And where would it actually go on the common?
Jen, have we?
I was thinking kind of if you're heading north of 97 and the gazebo is first right after the intersection, kind of right near there so that people will see it from most angles.
I think it's where the holiday, the holiday banner was.
Exactly.
Acknowledge the lights and things like that.
Okay, my only concern was just so that it wouldn't be blocking any view or sightlines, because that's a busy intersection with lots of cars coming. So depending on how big this banner was, that was my only concern for the placement.
Well, how big is the banner?
We haven't printed it yet. We were hoping to do a six foot wide by, I think it's six by three or
Three, I think it's three feet high and six feet.
Yeah, so it can be set back. I just think it should be facing that intersection as you're kind of looking north.
I would just ask that maybe you work with Chief Hovey to make sure he's comfortable where it gets placed, that it doesn't pose any danger to.
We can more than certainly do that, yes. We don't want to cause any issues.
Is that, is that going to be a two-sided banner or will only be read from one side?
One side.
One side. Primarily people going north or people going south?
Well, I'm thinking we can angle it such that, you know, we'll look at the positioning because I think the one from the holiday lights was positioned such that you could see it from multiple different directions. So keeping in mind the traffic and the patterns and things like that, we'll, we'll do the best to kind of reach the greatest audience.
That, that's all your business. Anyway, I don't mean to stick my nose into your business, but and both of these will be cloth banners, I assume?
Well, I think they're probably that nylon
Plywood thing.
Yeah. In other words, they're not going to be plywood or nothing like that.
No.
Okay, fine.
And then just a question about the second banner. So that one is at Bear Hill. It says Park Site, all in capitals. Is that just Bear Hill Park? Is that where it's going? And it says, there's no date as to when it's going up again, and it says to be removed no later than June 4. So why June 4? What does that represent? And how long is that one going to be up?
Yeah, so we were looking at sign regulations and I believe the temporary signage is approved for up to 60 days. I think that was the maximum for putting a temporary sign somewhere. And the idea is to get people who are walking by the area, a lot of people don't even know where the pump track is going and they walk by and they look and say, what is this? So we are trying to have the maximum amount of time to be able to get people interested in knowing that that's the location and we were thinking it very likely will be close to the time when we're starting to build sometime in June. So we thought the sooner we get more people to understand the location, the better. And if we take it down and it hasn't been built yet, so be it. We were just kind of working with the timeframe, what we read on the the town requirements for temporary signage.
Yeah, I think actually aren't the requirements for smaller signs for the temporary signs? I think six by three is probably larger.
Yes, that is true. Unfortunately, we did have a member of our board was put the sign through and we ordered it and then we realized afterwards that the the normal signage is supposed to be smaller. We were, I do think having a smaller sign there probably wouldn't be very visible because it is a place that people drive by. So I was thinking because it's a large area, it's wooded, it would be off to the side, not really blocking anyone's houses or any safety issues that we might be able to get approval for the sign that is bigger for that particular area. We could reprint it at a smaller size if that's what's, you know, what you think is necessary.
I mean, I think that we have the purview to approve a sign that's larger. I know it's a slightly different situation, but I recall in the meetings just before I became a board member that a business in town put up, painted up a very large sign that was very much outside the bounds of signed bylaws and this board approved that kind of on the idea, well, you've already done it and it looks okay, so we'll go with it. So
We actually had him adjust it.
Yeah, but it still was outside the
It was outside the boundaries, right. But he did shrink it based upon, yeah, when he came to the board, but.
Is the placement for this going to be on the road sign of the wall, Jen, or is it going to be step back like where the parking area is? I'm trying to, I'm trying to envision where that's going to be.
We hadn't finalized the location. We figured we'd talk to you first and see if you had recommendations. We can certainly talk to Chief Hovey. I was envisioning it being somewhere just behind the stone wall, up a little higher, like when you look at the pillars and the opening, we wouldn't block the opening, but probably off to the right. I think there's more bushes on the left, but off to the right, just out of the way, but behind that stone wall, but up high enough that you can see it and it won't block the wall, it won't block any, anything really.
No, it's not going to, it's not going to block any vision lines. So, you know, my inclination would be don't reprint it. You're going to be setback and that's going to bring the size into play. So it's got to serve a purpose.
I mean, we could always put it up or run it by you as it, see how it looks. If it looks too big and that, you know, that's an option. We can reorder a smaller version if need be, if we really are. But I do think it is a big area, so the sign won't seem quite as big given the space.
Right. Yeah.
I'm not
I don't have a problem
And just the, for how long it's it's up, it just.
I don't have a problem with the size of it, as long as you're not blocking view for somebody's view and driving. As far as I'm concerned, you ought to put it wherever you want it for maximum visibility.
Agreed.
And if you're concerned about the time, we can always put it up and if we, if we feel like we've met our fundraising goal or, you know, it's after the May 6 event and, you know, I'm sure we can work together on that, too. We've collaborated on a lot of other things to date, so I'm sure the conversation or if you guys are uncomfortable with something, we can certainly cross that bridge if we come to it.
Another option I know that has been employed in town is to rotate signs. So I believe the regulation is no single sign is allowed to be up for a certain amount of time. I'm not saying the building inspector complained about my signs in my yard. I'm not saying that he did. But this is what I've heard.
I mean, ultimately, the problem, the the out of bylaw problem here is not the time, it's the size. So
Well, it might be the time.
Typically, our banners that have gone up are, we treat differently than political signs or signs that people put in their private yard. For government land, we've typically restricted the number of time that these signs are up. So again, I would not have you reprint it. When we were just talking about bylaws, it's like, well, it doesn't really fit in the bylaw. It does. It's larger and I, I think it's not going to block any traffic. I just I haven't really had time to digest it because I didn't know what the June 4 date was or kind of the purpose.
I mean, we, we are certainly of the three motions in front of us, this one is the least time sensitive, I would say. So if people want to spend more time thinking about the third motion, I'm guessing that our friends in the Playground Committee are fine with that.
We take a look at it and just see, I mean, it may look perfectly fine and it's not an issue to be up there for longer than usual. It would be ready, what, a week or so? I mean, you were saying the other one's probably going to be ready by the 22nd.
This one's ready now. We actually have it. Yeah.
Could we take a look? Could we go out to the site and just take a look?
Yeah, sure. When would be a good time? Like we can, we can put it up this weekend and then you guys can go see if you like it or not, and then we can go from there. Or what do you recommend?
Just put it up and take a picture of it and circulate it.
Yeah, or, I mean, literally put it up this weekend and people can remember to drive by at some point, also take a picture and circulate.
Yeah, this is the only weekend, well, not the only one, but I'm heading down to New Jersey, so I won't be here. But yes, if we can see a picture of it, that could show dimensions, how it looks, et cetera, and then make a call.
That would be great. Thank you.
That would be great. Thanks a lot.
All right, so we will table that one for now. Anything else for our friends from the world of pump track? Megan, Jen, thank you very much.
Thank you all. We appreciate your support.
Town, what Town Common, do we vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had so in my head moved on to the the other one, but that's true. We do need to vote on the the other one, the second motion. My apologies.
Motion to approve the request from Topsfield Playground Committee to place one event banner at Town Common and to be removed no later than May 6, 2023.
And to go up on the 22nd of April?
And to go up on the 22nd of April.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that?
No further discussion, but I have a question for after the vote.
Okay, Mr. Jackson.
I, I, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Hi.
Mr. Brown.
What Boyd said.
Yeah, I think you voted I like nine times. Ms. Bermudez? And I vote I. So there you go. Mr. McDonald, your question.
Yeah, how, how have we handled these things traditionally? Being the newbie on the board, my, almost my, always my first question is, well, what's normal?
Well, what do you mean? I think we haven't had a lot of banners on the common and I think that this has been traditionally the way it gets two weeks. It's about that size and about that place, subject to approvals from people like the chief. So
Okay. The power's going in my head. Sorry.
Yeah, I understand. All right, now I'll return to saying goodbye to Jen and Megan. Jen, you clearly have other business to attend to.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for this. This is great.
All right, the next item is yet another one-day liquor license.
So, Mr. Chairman and Select Board, this one actually is part of the broader conversation in the last gen item, economic development, but it is a specific carve-out for tonight's purposes. It is time sensitive, thus it's on the agenda for the work session as a result of that. And what it is, it's, it's a liquor license for an event that we're going to have here at Topsfield Town Hall. We've been building up some partnerships with a number of local and community partners as well as partners in the, in the region, in all part of our ultimate number one town goal that we established for fiscal 23 and prior years of economic development and downtown revitalization. One of not the most important part of that is the communication and relationships you build and the partnerships. And so Nate Allard, who is the executive director of the Newbury Port Chamber of Commerce, and I've been strategizing on ways we can combine efforts because there's a lot of, he recognizes as well as many others, the really great momentum we have around economic development and sees the opportunity to try to partner and get his his organization's presence here at Topsfield and have Topsfield be able to spread the word on all the things that we're working on, which we'll cover later and then some. And so be able to spread the word on all the things that we're working on, which we'll cover later and then some. And so we're having a networking event for, for the twenty-fourth next, I'm sorry, for the twentieth next week, Thursday, here at Town Hall at five thirty. And part of that will be a, a beer and wine table that will be available for, for the event for people who are participating in it. And with that, eventually last ninety minutes plus, beginning of the event will be an update. Welcome remarks, apart from myself and Nate, and then an update, in essence, a continuation of our efforts that we did last year with the, the June sixth, twenty-two develop, uh, Business and Development Showcase. There'll be an update on all, on all the ongoing things that we're working on, some updates on the Highway Garage, et cetera. And it'll just be an opportunity thereafter for, for people who are like-minded, who have that vision and that passion for Topsfield, and it's downtown, it's revitalization. To get in a room together to talk, you know, how people might be able to partner and to talk about all the great things that we're working on. So we asked tonight, I'm, I'm asking on behalf of the Newbury Port Chamber of Commerce, who is the sponsor of the event, the nonprofit event, or nonprofit partner to find, see support from the board to issue such one day license for the event.
One day licenses in, in general, we probably want to have a discussion about this. Traditionally, they have been to help nonprofits fundraise. So this doesn't sound like a fundraiser for Newbury Port Chamber of Commerce. There's no fee to enter, there's no money raised.
So my understanding with the one day licenses is that it needs to be provided to a nonprofit organization. In this instance, there would, in this instance, we weren't sure if there was going to be a, a third party cash bar or if it's going to be tip certified manned table through the chamber that's, that's doing it and that there would not be a charge for the alcohol. So in this instance, you know, the vein of transparency, we said we're going to go for liquor license anyway, or I suggested we, we propose and receives approval and a liquor license from the Select Board for the event. With regards to specifically if it's a fundraiser, I haven't seen those explicit words in the in the regulations, my understanding is thus far is that it's for can only be issued to a nonprofit organization, which by definition are not looking for profit, but are rather trying to further cause, whether it's recognition or some cases, financial contributions to help them be solvent.
Well, I would agree, it might not be written out after look at the bylaw, but that was the, the intent. It was a way to help nonprofits raise funds for their purpose, not necessarily to be profitable, but to raise money to help with whatever activities that they were doing. So it it looks like we're moving a little bit more towards finding a fund, a nonprofit to apply for the liquor license for anyone who would like to have liquor at their events. And I understand the intent and, and what we're trying to do here, but we may want to relook at this because then anybody could just kind of grab a nonprofit and say, hey, can you come over here? I, we want to have liquor at our event and we're just going to kind of use your name and your status in order to get the one day license. So we're kind of twisting, I think, the original intent of it. And so I think we should be aware that we're kind of setting a new precedent here as to how you use a nonprofit to bring liquor to an event.
So Mad Vice Chair, I would say that in every one of our liquor license requests, it has been a partnership where the lead applicant and the event is from a nonprofit who is receiving funds to support their, their activities and they're bringing a partner who is serving that alcohol on their behalf, whether it's, we just talked about the Ipswich Ale or if it's another group that's, that's organizing the event, but then providing some contribution back to the nonprofit, if they're the ones physically collecting the funds at the event. So.
That's what we have done, yeah.
That's what we've done. This case right here.
It's different.
It's not.
Giving any money back to the chamber.
No, it's not a fundraiser. I mean, if we, if they, if we wanted to ensure that there was a charge for the alcohol, those funds would go right back to the chamber. Certainly, if that's, if that's a, a point that we want to make sure we're consistent with, that's fine. The idea was to make it as open an event and, you know, cash bar versus just providing. And like I said, if it's just my understanding too is if it's a private event without charging, you do not necessarily need a one day license to do that either. So we're actually belting suspendering this a little bit in that sense.
Are they actually applying for the license? Are they, they're the applicants, so they're providing the billion dollar insurance and they've named the town as a additional insured?
So I talked with Nate, they, he, he did confirm that they're getting that certificate for us. I don't have it physically put up on board docs right now. But that is something that we did request for them that is absolutely required before there's any type of activity because that's the consistency. We, we require that hard stop for any event that's doing a, a one day license and this would, you know, there would be no exception to this here.
Have, have we ever had an event where alcohol was served in Town Hall?
So before I came, there was a policy created that stipulates that alcohol can be served. It doesn't stipulate if it's for profit, nonprofit. It doesn't stipulate if it has to be for sale or provided as part of the event at no cost. But it, there, in that policy that was created, it does allow for alcohol to be served at Town Hall. This follows that, we looked at that to make sure that we weren't creating a new precedent or stepping outside of any regulations. Like I've always said, we should be treated the same, if not more stringent when it comes to any rules or regulations. The town should not be trying to sidestep or take advantage of anything. And so we, we, we looked at that a couple of times and a couple of people looked at to make sure there wasn't any issues. What we've done is the Council on Agent has asked in the past to do events with alcohol and I said that's fine, but the applicant cannot be the town. It needs to be an event that's hosted by the physically they can do it there because the policy allows it, but it's, I, this is a personal preference, the town should not be serving alcohol. This event is the Newbury Port Chamber of Commerce's event. Nate would tell you that, I'll tell you that, it's not the town's, we are just hosting it. And at the event, we've been invited to speak about Topsfield and what we've been up to from an economic development standpoint. So Mr. Jackson, to answer your question, I'm unaware of any alcohol. I've been told there has there was a wedding, I guess, here before I started, a wedding reception up at the hall that Ms. Marong mentioned to me where there was alcohol. Not, but then COVID hit right after I started, so we basically froze any events until basically the last six to eight months.
Kevin, I, 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 I don't care whether it's been served or not. I just wanted to make sure that we were not on slippery ground, serving alcohol in Town Hall. If you've got it in writing, then I don't have a problem with it.
What's in actual writing is the policy that I wrote, Boyd, when we were on the board together. So we discussed that as a board as to whether or not we wanted to allow alcohol and we decided it's perfectly fine for there to be alcohol. But as Kevin said, it can't be the town as the applicant because KP felt that was much too live, you know, too much liability for us. If someone were drinking and went out and had an issue, they would sue the town. So it had to be someone else who was the applicant and that's why the COA did not move forward with their event.
Would say to the, the concern, which is not an invalid one, that somebody might as, as Lynn said, you know, grab a charity just for show. Ultimately, everybody would still have to come before us, right? So they would have to go through the, you know, our questions or whoever may be sitting in our seats questions to make sure that the arrangement is one that we would determine is valid. Ultimately, it still has to come before us. And so to that degree, I'm not worried about changing precedents because ultimately every one of them will still come before this board, whoever may be on this board at that point.
Kevin, I think, I think in concept, it's, it's smart to have a good relationship with contiguous or closely neighboring towns. You know, for them to host a event for the Chamber of Commerce with us and give us a chance to speak, yeah, I mean, we may excite a restaurateur who's looking to expand and, and a lot of, a lot of really cool things could happen. So I'm, you know, as I'm listening to everybody talk and I'm, I'm following the bouncing ball here, you know, I think we may want to rethink this law or bylaw and say for economic development and for opportunities for us to forward our economic development agenda. You know, let's call it what it is. Let, let's say that that's what we're doing and let's grant a license for it. You know, if, if we're going to have fifty people from Newbury Port or whatever the number is here that could potentially help us, man, I'm in with both feet on that. I think that's great.
And if it's a preference for the board regarding Mad Vice Chairs comment about needing to generate revenue for a nonprofit. If it's, if it's determined that it's going to be sold, which I don't think is going to be the case, we would need a one day license because there would be a sale of alcohol served by a tip certified person. Get a bit. Most recently, when I talked with, with Nate, his intention is not to have the sale component of it, in which case the, the one day license is not necessary. So I just want to sort of say, this was the, the reason we're bringing it in front of you is a transparency that, to actually have this conversation. We haven't had an event since I've been here, that there's been alcohol served upstairs. And then two, in the event that something changes in the next handful of days for any reason. Having a license, I think, is a good thing. It also allows the chief of police and the fire chief look at it, right? I think that's really important. So, you know, we went through the process and we wanted to bring this to you in full transparency. And, you know, the other events we've done where there's been nonprofits partnering with professional servers or those Ipswich Ale, those have all been very successful. The nonprofits do receive funding back in all these cases. I've spoken at length with the Alcohol Licensing Board and the Chair. We had a meeting with ALAC, if you remember, in the fall, where they said we're doing it exactly right. There's, they have not seen any issues from a process standpoint. You know, no red flags and it was encouraged to continue. So you know, ALAC's not Topsfield, they're the state, but you know, they see a lot of communities and how they do think successfully and safely. And they, that, that was, I thought, a very important moment to, to have them understand what we're doing, how we're doing it and provide some feedback from that perspective as well. But to your point, Mr. Brown, you know, we're working within those, 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 they created bylaw and home rule petition and everything that was set up years ago. And if we want to pivot, we certainly can. It would take an active well, actually, so it's, is it a policy, Mad Vice Chair, is that?
Yeah, I, I think we're conflating the two issues. The, the bylaw is to allow nonprofits in town to get a license to, to serve the alcohol and, and it's part of a fundraiser for them. Usually, that is why it was put in place. I don't think necessarily you need an outside organization like Chamber of Commerce to come to us for a one day liquor license to rent the hall and bring alcohol. It's a policy that we made that you can rent our hall and bring alcohol. Do what you want. If you're a wedding, if you're having a family party, you can do whatever you want. Just meet the policy guidelines about you know, who's serving the alcohol and don't take it off premise. And if you have over ninety-nine people getting touch with the chief, I think we're trying to make this into something, you know, for a one day liquor license. It's, it's totally different. They're renting the hall. Let them rent the hall.
One point of clarification though is I know there's been a number of organizations, Ipswich Watershed Association. There's a couple of, of, of other fundraisers that I'm aware of that, that are not tops of nonprofits that have received one day licenses as well.
But they're in Topsfield, they're having the event in Topsfield outside, right?
Right. So like the Newbury Port Chamber of Commerce is coming to Topsfield or the Ipswich Watershed Association is coming to Topsfield. And that's why they, they're physically in Topsfield and that's why they get the one license. Absolutely. But just, they're not always Topsfield nonprofits, is I guess my, my point.
Yeah, but they're, they're in Topsfield outside. This, I don't, and you know, Dick is on and he could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think if a, someone wants to hold a wedding in the Town Hall, that they need to come to us to get a liquor license, you know?
You don't think that this one requires a liquor license of any sort?
I don't think so. And that's why, you know, Nancy's on and Dick is on, so you can correct me. But if you rent the hall you, and follow the policies, I don't think you need a license from us to do your event.
Only if, if it's pay to receive alcohol is my, if it is a, a, a financial transaction, I believe that's when the license comes into play.
Nancy, are you there? Can you dump on or Dick?
Hi.
Here she comes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, Nancy, thanks.
I didn't catch everything, but it's in my understanding that the Newbury Port Chamber of Commerce wants to use the meeting room upstairs?
Yep.
Okay. And for an event. That's fine. They don't need a license unless, you know, they're not selling, are they?
They, there was a, a time when there was, there was uncertainty while we were going through the process, whether it was going to be providing alcohol at the event at no cost or if there was going to be a transaction. At this point, it's sitting here right now, the, the intent, after talking with Nate earlier today is that alcohol will not be sold. So that's why I made the reference.
Sure. If they're, if they're giving it away, they don't need a license. And, and they come under the, the regs that Lynn worked on a few years ago for Town Hall. And you're right, Lynn, if it's, if it could be a party, it could be the wedding, it could be anything, but there's, there's no handling of money. There's no exchange of money.
Then I would say, thank you very much, Nancy. You know, I, I'm happy we had this conversation because there is a lot of clarity to what we're talking about, but it sounds like we don't need a vote, which by the way, solves another problem of fewer things to vote on.
So it doesn't mix them up. We, we're not trying to make the one day liquor license into something that it wasn't intended to be. If we want to change that, we should just discuss it and, and change it, but not try to fit, you know, square into a round.
I, I appreciate the, the clarity, but can I ask Nancy, who, who is, who is Nancy?
Oh, you're not supposed to ask that.
Here's a guy, here's a guy in town that doesn't know who Nancy Luther is.
That's what.
Blackout, Raphael, just go, go, go.
We have a three person alcohol licensing advisory board and of which Nancy is one of those three people.
Okay, thank you.
And she's been around, she's been around Topsfield for a long freaking time.
Forty-six years, boy.
That's only forty more than I've been here.
Six, Marshall.
Yeah, well, there you go.
Oh, right. Yeah, never mind. There goes my math.
So you're supposed to be the math guy. So it sounds, if I may summarize and move us, plunge us forever forward. We don't need a vote on a liquor license because this event does not require a liquor license. We have now fully vetted it and discussed it and are in favor of the event. But ultimately, as long as they're not selling the alcohol and have complied by everything else, and it sounds as though they have that no one day liquor licenses required for this. Have I summarized correctly?
Correct.
I, I will let Nate at the chamber know that the, that it needs to be an open, not a for sale.
We just need to have the town as an additional insured on their policy.
Right. And, and then, and then there's some kind of a lease, right?
It's an indemnification form and, and an application.
Yeah. And, and a cost, but, yeah, so.
All right.
In, Marshall, if, if I may, if we're not going to require, if we, if we don't require a license for somebody that wants to come in and use Town Hall and serve alcohol, it seems there ought to be some way that we are aware when alcohol is being served at a function in Town Hall. I don't know how we do that.
Well, I mean, they need permission to use Town Hall, you know, and are you saying that this board needs to grant that permission? Because right now.
I, I don't know. It seems to me, it seems to me that we ought to know when alcohol is being served in Town Hall for what can, for what kind of event.
And so if there as, I mean, no, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I object to it. I just And so if there were, as, as, I mean, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I object to it. I just want to clarify where we are. So to use the theoretical example that I have somehow gotten divorced and am getting remarried and want to hold. I'm not getting divorced.
This has really been a hell of a meeting.
You may, you may get some, you may get some conversation.
You know what? Maybe I'm, I'm.
Go, go with this. Keep going, Marshall.
Kill the last thirty seconds of that tape, that would be good.
My daughter is getting married and wants to hold her, her reception here because we just love Topsfield oh so much. If I were going to have a private party here in which I was giving out alcohol as you would as a wedding, we want the town select board to be involved in that. And again, I, I know that that question is probably phrased that makes it sound like I'm objecting to this. I'm not. I'm just trying to clarify that that's what.
I'm, I'm not sure. I, I'm, I'm not sure I'm suggesting that we ought to be involved. It just seems to me there, there ought to be some mechanism maybe that we know when alcohol is being served.
Okay.
Help me, help me out here.
Will know because the application.
So the.
That, that document that folks fill out in order to use the, the Town Hall.
Isn't, isn't. Yeah, I think it goes to Kevin. I don't think you need signature by the board.
No.
So the way the policy was crafted, I think the intent was for use of the hall, alcohol, no alcohol. Go through, in this case, it's typically going to be Debbie or as a backup Sam or working collaboratively. Somebody comes in looking for a use of that. What happens now is they typically come to me before issuing it with the information that's being requested. There's an application form on it and there's also a cost schedule based on what your purpose is of using it and who is asking for that space. If you're local, there's a cost or no cost. If you're a for-profit from another community using it, there's a cost. There's cleanup costs, setup costs, and typically based on this and the policy, I point this way because that's what I held up. And based on the application, we determine how much they, they charge. And there's clear clarity in there of the number of people. If it's a hundred or more, estimated to come, police detail needs to be present, et cetera. So we do have a clear policy that was very comprehensive that Miss Bermuda's worked on with KP. And we could certainly add, if the board would like, to provide a notification, maybe in my town administrator updates.
It sounds like we have a mechanism to inform the town administrator's office or Town Hall about an event that's going to have alcohol being served. And I, I'm, I'm satisfied to that. If, if we got a mechanism to handle that, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, and both chiefs have to sign off on it. So lots of eyeballs have looked at it to make sure everything's close.
Yeah, fine.
It was in a work session because we actually did some really good work, I think.
Yeah, there we go. And we didn't take a vote, so this has been perfect for our purpose.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the support for the event and I, I think it's going to be another step forward in the right direction to help us get some momentum behind the economic development. And I'll, like I said, I'll let Nate know. We'll make sure we get the insurance and all the paperwork, you know, everything done properly. And hopefully we will have a great event. Thank you.
I'm just excited. We're getting some revenue, you know, out of the public hall. Woo. This is like event number three, maybe.
So we want, so we wind up being the non-for-profit organization.
No, no.
Don't complicate it.
All right. Item number six on our agenda is a grant acceptance. Hopefully we can knock this out relatively quickly. We do like.
The, this is actually the same vein as the last one with some time sensitivity. We received this Friday, the thirty-first. We had the April third meeting, but the agenda, we wouldn't have time to put on the agenda necessarily without a modification, that coupled with the fact that the, the last meeting was postponed. This was added to the agenda tonight. This being a fifteen thousand dollar grant that Chief Collins Brown sourced, applied for and received with the state of Massachusetts for a study in electrification of their utilities over at the fire station. In essence, there's, I don't believe any match associated with this grant. And I think that it hopefully will allow us to, if we have, are successful with this application and the work associated with it, we'll see hopefully potential improvements in the future. And with that, cost savings from a, from electricity standpoint specifically.
Kevin, what does it do? The electrification of the utilities?
Yeah, so I'm glad you asked, Lynn. I was thinking like, I can't get this one.
Heat pumps.
Yeah, simply put, it's just transitioning from the boiler to the split units or other things that are run off electricity.
Gotcha.
Got it.
I, I got that. It's clear. Yeah, yeah, fifteen grand. Sounds great.
It's amazing to me because this is just to study it.
How they can reconfigure the, the engineering of the building to, to fully electrify the, the space.
Wow. That's grant money. It's great.
Is it an outside consultant that comes in to do the analysis? How is the money actually spent?
That's my understanding. That the, we received the grant, then we contract with up to the dollar amount that's being awarded to have a study performed. That would then allow us to have that game plan going forward.
Okay.
Are we ready for a motion on this one?
Sure. Motion to accept a grant from the, you know, hold on one second. Everyone take a deep breath. Motion to accept a grant from the grant from municipal energy technical assistance grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. I didn't write it. I just said it.
I think we have some extra words in there.
I think so. To accept a grant from the municipal energy technical assistance grant in the amount of fifteen thousand.
Second.
Any other discussion other than on the wording of the motion?
Just for clarity, this is due the twenty-first of April.
Okay. Uh, all right, we'll move to roll call vote. Mr. McDonald.
Hi.
Mr. Brown.
Hi.
Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
Kevin, just, sorry, that wasn't clarification for me. What is April twenty-first?
The, we have to sign off and return to the state the contract for this grant.
Oh, okay.
The one you devoted, so.
Okay. Grant from the grant? Yeah.
There, there are like nine grants in there. They're all good.
It's all free money.
It only counts as one grant in your report, though, Kevin. You can't count that one three times just because. Um, all right, now we'll get to what I, uh, uh, hour into the meeting had envisioned as being the meat of the meeting. Our update on economic development, which I will certainly turn over to Kevin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coming out of our, our budget slash warrant process, we've, we've been working on, on that head down, but also working on some items that have been really important to try to meet our, again, number one goal for the community for fiscal twenty-three, which is economic development and downtown beautification. And there's been a lot of work being done on the side that have just been getting done. And I thank the team, the people behind that, including Sam and Debbie and many, many others. But we've, we've made some really good progress on a number of fronts and wanted to provide an update on a lot of them and then specifically have a little more conversation around one in particular. And an update of where we are regarding the lease of the pocket park space downtown. So with that said, the first I'm going to lead off with, and I've said this since I've been here three years ago when I started. You know, comprehensive master plan is, is something that I think would really benefit the community. It would allow for the people that I've heard a lot from to have a, a, a platform to speak about what they'd like to envision the future of Topsfield looks like. The things they want to protect, the things they want, they see opportunity areas on. And so we've, we've had three phases of the master plan. The first phase wrapped up about three weeks ago and we pivoted over the last three weeks and for the next couple of weeks into the engagement phase two part of the comprehensive master plan. I think I mentioned in one of my updates about a month ago that the survey, they said six hundred people should be the, the goal. We, we made the goal seven hundred respondents and it's a lofty goal, especially in a small community, but thanks to that really fantastic steering committee, master plan steering committee that we have and the efforts by Gregor Smith, by, by Zillity and a number of others on that committee. It's been pushed out and at our last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, they gave us an update on the survey results as well as the other outreach components. And our survey results have been outstanding. We've had over five hundred and four responses as of a week ago. I haven't got an update for tonight's meeting, but as of a week ago, we had, we had that, which the consultant said was, was leaps and bounds be past what they initially thought from a, of how the, how we usually see the results come in, we would be at that point. But that was really a grassroots, bottom-up approach of just grabbing anybody and everybody in this community that's interested in having them sit down for ten to fifteen minutes, take the survey. So again, big thank you to all the people behind the scenes making that happen. It, it, it makes a big difference. We're also engaging with what we're calling meeting in the box where, and I encourage anyone on the select board to, to stop by Town Hall and grab a meeting in the box, grab a handful of friends and, you know, dinner and maybe a drink or whatever. And it's a great opportunity to put up on the wall, map and talk about, you know, all the, all the things people envision Topsfield can be and also really confirm the things that make Topsfield special and the things we want to make sure we maintain. But those, that's another avenue for people to participate. And then there's an interactive map on the landing page of the master plan website where you can map out where things should go. It's kind of like playing SimCity, I guess, in a sense for the town of Topsfield. And we have some really creative ways that we're going to try to bring people in. We've obviously leveraged our social media platforms to outreach. We put flyers in the school backpacks and we reached out to the COA. Originally, we weren't getting, when we saw the demographics, it was a little bit of a bell curve, very young people and very mature people in the community. Had not responded at the levels of people sort of in the middle of that bell curve. And so what we did is we printed out a hundred surveys and, and we brought up the COA. We put in the last newsletter information and the hard copies are actually what people in the COA are now bringing to us. It's pretty neat that they, they're a little skeptical of doing it online. Some, not all, but some were skeptical. So we met the people where they were. They wanted a hard copy. Here's your hard copy. We'll enter it in for you later. But it's getting a more broad spectrum of people's perspective and input on the community and the master plan process. So that's generally the update. We, oh, I will say one last thing. At Town Meeting, we have a captured audience and we're going to have a big audience because the overrides. We're going to get a hotspot because the maskonomic internet connection in the auditorium is not great, but we're going to put a billboard with a QR code. As you walk through, you can hit the QR code and do the survey while you wait for the meeting to start. Obviously, you wouldn't take the survey during the meeting because people are going to be engaged in every one of the articles. But if they, if they do need a ten minute break at any point, they could take it as well. But it's another place to capture the people that are invested in our community. It's that those are the people that really, that people who come out to Town Meeting, those are the people that really pay attention and really care. And we want to make sure we get all them to, to provide their input as well. So just a lot of really good momentum behind that, the master plan, and it's, it's going really, really well. So thank you to all the, the steering committee, our, our chair, Mr. Hook, for his participation, his, his leadership on the committee. It, it's going really well. Before I move on, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the master plan.
When does it close? When does the survey close?
Survey closes the day after Town Meeting. They wanted to close at the end of April. I'm like, no, we got to go two more days. We got, we got probably multiple hundreds of people coming through the Town Meeting. Let's get those people. That will probably close for some of the meeting in the box and some general input that you can, you can provide us on the website. Maybe a week thereafter that, so people can get like that last bit of information back into us. I would point out Jen Collins Brown, who's on the committee, she's our clerk. She went up to Littlebrook, Littlebrook Village last weekend and sat down for a couple hours with that community and did a meeting in the box up there. So you, you know, there's been some really incredible outreach, people taking their own time to, to help get some really good data. So it's great.
It's pretty helpful in helping articulate kind of your thoughts. Like it's, it's, it's a pretty good process to, after you take the survey, you're like, so I prioritize that over that. That's interesting. I, I got a kick out of it.
I'm going to suggest to Mr. McDonald that he and I get the, get the, get the neighborhood together and do a meeting in the box.
I'm guessing the people we might invite to that have already filled out the survey as well.
Yeah, we'll find the ones that haven't. Anyway.
So just very quickly, we talked about the ECDC meeting. So I won't spend too much time here because we're introducing it to them. But we did talk about the warrant articles this year, the zoning ones. And there's, there's some good conversation that we had at the ECDC meeting around that, led by our vice chair, Ms. Bermuda's. And, you know, I think there's some really good support, generally speaking, from that committee as well. Some of them are aware of the articles, some of them not, and it was a good conversation. But I think that there's a lot of, a lot of support there, which is great. Coming, upcoming events, we talked about the event next week with the chamber. But we have solidified two dates with the Topsfield Elementary School PTO and then subsequently with the sponsors of the Tomato Festival for the block parties. We talked about that. We were looking to do one on St. Patrick's Day weekend, but the, the timing got shorter. We wanted to make sure we did it right, especially the first one. And so we, we pushed it out to the May date and then the June date.
Kevin, you mean the Strawberry Festival, right? Not the Tomato?
Oh, thank you. Please don't wait, please don't wait till the. It'll be much sooner than that. It'll be much sooner than that. But we're talking about, about possibly introducing strawberry wine, strawberry beer, so that this, the theme can be carried out. But the really, really neat thing about the, both of the, the, start with the Strawberry Festival in June is that we'll have the traditional event on the common, but then, you know, people can have the chance to walk through the downtown, go over to the old highway garage and go into that space and into the parking lot where there'll be a band up and there'll be food. There'll be a little bit of entertainment and seating areas and a place for people to gather and just enjoy the hopefully beautiful day. The highway garage. And I would say we're going to enjoy the beautiful highway garage because on the twenty-fourth, thanks to Chief Hovey, we have inmates from Middleton, Middleton coming to paint the white trim on the outside and the walls of the highway garage at no cost for the town except for the paint, Dunkin' Donuts and a pizza in the afternoon. They're going to paint the building and sprucing it up just a little bit. But they'll be taking, the, the event coordinators will be taking half of the base spaces. And they'll be draping the, the, that area so that materially we move to the back of the building and we can really focus on beautifying the front parts of that space. But it goes back to when the RFP went out in the fall and came back. And we made some other progress and I'll talk about it in a second with the garage, but we said, you know, we really need to activate that space, get people excited for it. And so being able to partner on the, the days of those events with good partners, the nonprofits and a group that's very professional, focused on safety for these types of events is really important. And it's just going to be a great activation tool for the downtown. And I know that the Tesco is very excited for it. And I know that the Strawberry Festival organizers are as well. So those will be coming to the board soon, but we're starting to get out to the neighbors. Just so you're aware, in case somebody reaches out, letting them know that the events are coming. A letter will be going out tomorrow to those neighbors. And members of the, the planning committee who are actually residents in the downtown will be knocking on all the neighbors' doors. And after the letter goes out, just to say if there's any questions, answer any specifics, that face-to-face matters. But the letter will come from Tesco and then the face-to-face from the people within the community that are really supportive of it, which is, which is great. So by the time we come for that liquor license, and then we'll need ones for those for sure. We'll have a lot of good feedback, I think, from the community and we'll have, be much farther along with all this very, very specific details for the event because we'll need to make sure. But we've had about three or four planning meetings on the events with all of the organizers, our public safety team and some volunteers who are helping to set the event up. And we're making some really good progress.
Kevin, that one will be coming before the board on the twenty-fourth because of the Mother's Day weekend. I'm not sure we're meeting. Are we meeting after the twenty-fourth? But before then, it's probably, twenty-fourth is probably the right date.
We are targeting the twenty-fourth for that event. We talked to, with Tesco Monday at our planning call and we said we need to have the information in the sand for, for Monday, twenty-fourth. So that's the date we're targeting.
Okay.
So that's super exciting. Those are the two events. Um, so that's super exciting. Those are the two events. Um, outside of the chamber one that's coming up. Um, the wave finding signs, which we've talked about for some time, um, are in fabrication right now. Um, the contract we signed is that they need to be completed and in the ground by June first. We have a little bit of buffer till July first, but the that's what the contract reads in this. There's a real possibility it could go maybe a few days or a week after, but we should be underneath that July first date um for the installation to happen. Um, we're gonna be on a sidewalk on Wednesday of next week to to actually go physically to the locations where the signs will potentially be located. And identify exact locations where we're gonna put them in the ground. We've talked with Mass DOT, which is where a lot of the signs will be located on the right of ways of Route One. Um, as well as ninety seven, which they have said they love the idea and the concept and that they're supportive of it. It just their their one piece of advice is locating a place where the plows won't um hit them. So we'll we'll make sure. Yeah, very conscious of that and um, give a wild to be with us as well to help us through that process and identifying location, but. It's a long time coming and we talked about how important those signs are for those businesses in our downtown and activating that space and bringing people into that town. Um, it's it's a really important. It's a little little item at the end of the day that makes a very large difference. Um, I've told people, we five hundred thousand people that come to the Topsfield Fair over eleven day period. We grab one percent of those people because they see that sign because they don't want funnel cake that night. They'd rather have something else. Um, that's five thousand that five thousand more people in our downtown. Um, and that's that's a boon for that those businesses, a significant one. So. Um, I think it's fortunately we're paying through a grant on this, but it's worth every penny of that grant um for the economic viability of our of our businesses downtown. And then I would just mention before I get into the last two technical items, um. Working right now with a a um. Uh, an ice cream shop that has a storefront in another community and they're looking to expand the Topsfield. Um, in a location very close to the rail trail, um, which is super exciting.
So that's great news.
Yeah, it's a very good compliment to everything else that that's kind of happening and I've got.
Can you say that again? Sorry, I just missed the first part.
There's an ice cream store that's looking at leasing a space downtown. Right now, there's no contract signed, but we've met with them a couple of times. Talked about the concept. Um, our teams, they had don't do not see any red flags from our end with what the concept is and what they're looking at doing. Uh, Board of Health, um, Building, um, are comfortable with it, Public Safety. Um, and now it's up to the to the proposed tenant to work out a deal with the landlord and if that happens, um, it could be pretty exciting for for downtown. Um, and then we also, there's a couple of spaces that have opened up. When they do open up, I always see it's an opportunity. Let's let's see if we can get a really great tenant to backfill that space. Um, one of them is the Topsfield Cleaners, which has been vacant for some time. Um, I'm talking right now with two. Um, groups that are looking to locate a yoga studio in town potentially. And I I look at that space and I'm like, it's prime for something just like that, an activation, a a active use type of thing. It's setback, so it's not like you're exercising right on the on the sidewalk, but it does have big windows and has a clean, open space. Um, which I think is gonna lend very well to something like that. Um, I can just see people coming in early, getting in their workout, going across the street to Zoomies. And then. Sitting in the plaza that's hopefully gonna come, the little pocket park that we've talked about thereafter, but we'll get more detail on that in a second. Um, but it can create this really great synergy downtown, this really nice dynamic of placemaking and 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 such. I've met recently with uh more than a handful of people interested in investing in this community or just recently invested in the community. Um, the owner, the new owner of fifty eight Main Street, um, I met with him this week. Uh, he's got some incredible vision for his space and he's very interested in possibly further investment in Topsfield, which I think would be great. Met with a couple of other groups around um, the 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 restaurant concept at our highway garage. Um, as well as um, a couple of other interested tenants which uh for downtown, which would be super exciting. I'm gonna pivot now over to the two articles in the um. In the warrant that I think could be the most, two of the more important things that um we accomplish around economic development in Topsfield. Um, the first being, and this is kind of short and sweet, but the first being the option to purchase the land next to the highway garage. Um, we estimated we could fit about forty seats based on a septic design, based on space on the property of the old highway garage. It makes for a very difficult business model, forty seats for that space of four thousand square feet to build that out for one and a half to two million dollars. We've heard from a number of professionals that you need at least a hundred seats. And so. After we did the RFP the last time, we heard that loud and clear that that was something that was a barrier for people. And so. I engaged with the vacant, the property that's a vacant land next to, next to it between the green belt, the box top and our property. Um, that property is currently non-buildable, does not have the frontage and it has significant water setbacks from the wetlands behind it. We engaged in in some conversation and um, as of Mon- Monday night. The we came to terms and have a signed option to purchase the land. The idea of that is that the town is buying it for the option for one dollar. And that we will then take at a certain purchase price for the land. Town has no intention of buying the land. But the town intends to put the in the RFP, the option to purchase the option off of us for a dollar. Which allows them to have rights to buy that land, which gives that person the right to put a hundred seat restaurant into that space. Which makes absolutely a business argument of why the investment would be worth it um for somebody to do just that. So um. It's a, it's it's a great partnership with that property owner, very grateful for that. Um, and uh, I think it's a, it's one of those very. I don't wanna say rare, but very um special win-win type of moments where um, we're. Building towards something that's really great, achieving something that achieving something that's gonna allow us to open up opportunities. And um, everybody's walking away, I think, at this point in a really good place. It does need a town. Uh, town meeting vote though, because it's an option to purchase, even though we don't intend to, they still need to vote the op- the option to be approved. For the select where to sign it. So um.
Kevin, just to clarify on that contiguous land um that you're talking about. We've talked about septic, we've talked about parking, we've talked about a number of different uses for it. What's the current? Thinking on that?
So that in the in the document, him, both the seller and 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 myself said. That shouldn't be developed. It abuts conservation land.
Okay.
Our neighbors, the idea of this to activate the garage, not create a complex of housing in multiple types of development. And it's limited because of the wetlands. So in the document that we agreed to that was signed, it stipulates that the land will be used for. Um, septic, parking, sitting, walking paths, any of those types of additional uses similar. But not for construction of any commercial or residential housing. So it limit, it allows us to accomplish something significant now with our property without in. Really changing the dynamic of what's on that property, other than to maybe add parking there, which I think at this point with a hundred seats would be necessary.
Cam, nobody's allowed to build there anyway. It has no frontage.
Has no branch, okay.
Um, Kevin, from a process um standpoint, the signatures of the select board, does that happen after town hall if. You know, they approve after town hall?
Yes.
Meeting, town meeting.
The the vote will be on the town meeting to um allow the select board to enter into an option agreement. So once that's voted on.
Then we sign.
Hope, I hope everyone will be um on beginning of May third for that night. I'll bring it with me. Um, we'll get the signatures as long as the board is fully supportive, which I know we've talked about this and it sounds like they are, so. Um.
That's great. Good job, Kevin.
Yeah, it's amazing. Appreciate it. It's a really, that's a really smart approach. It's a really smart approach. Is it gonna be clear enough? For, you know, the ten thousand people who are gonna be at the high school, like is that? It it, because it it is a little complex, so.
Finance committee is gonna have to explain it and then I'm sure if there's any specific questions, I'll be at the mic, probably walking people through. What it means if they vote yes and in the in the real opportunity that's behind it.
I mean, ob- obviously the hero of that is explaining there is no expenditure on behalf of the town. There is no. Money, funds, transfer, anything.
No risk.
Except for that a dollar.
I was gonna say, does he get his dollar like?
Yeah, what the hell, you know, let's talk about that.
I think we should talk about selectmen. He gave it to him. He he already gave it to him. I didn't want to risk that one.
We're gonna use, we're gonna use Marshall's dollar.
Yeah. Which one? I'm up to three of them at this point. Um, yeah, and and I think, I think to Cam's point. And you know I love you dearly, Kevin, but sometimes you say in fifteen words what could be best said in five, so we'll want to keep this one as simple. As possible. The town isn't actually buying this land. There's no scenario where we're buying this land. We are buying an option on the land that will be given, you know. Combined with the highway garage and then the actual purchase of the land will be done by whoever buys the highway garage. In practice.
Bincom will say that. They will present that.
Let us hope they do.
They they have to.
No, no, I know, but I again, I I'm I'm trying to make a diff- I a differentiation between the, you know. Required full factual explanation and then the kind of common language explanation.
Yeah, I think they'll do well. They practice.
Okay.
And if called upon, I will be brief.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we're gonna turn off Kevin's mic.
It's the long uh. Um, so the last item for, well, uh, yeah, so the last item for tonight on economic development um that I wanted to cover was that. Um, to me with uh the owner of thirty Main Street, which is um the shopping center, that's Peter Flomp. Uh, we've been meeting on a regular basis, as the board knows, we've talked about this um about a month and a half ago or so. Uh, we've been engaging at the direction, just like for negotiations to acquire a lease for the rights to the land. And the front part of his property, that is the land from the property line between Topsfield House of Pizza. Over to the property line next to M and T Bank and back to where the curb uh islands are. As you enter into the parking area. Um, we've been also engaging simultaneously again at the direction of select board with. Matt Ulrich from Ulrich Design, uh, who is helping us with the um, the design of a of a pocket park there. Um, if and also with a pocket park slash parking municipal parking area. Uh. We have had a lease drafted, which has been presented to the property owner. His former lawyer gave us some very high level comments back. Um. And then since then, I've mocked that up and sent it back to KP Law to review. Further edits edits that I made on the document. Um, I talked to both Matt and Lauren yesterday. Uh, in regards to another call that we were on from KP and they I asked if possible to have it by the end of today. I haven't seen it. I am meeting with Mr. Flomp tomorrow morning. My hope is to actually deliver him a lease for his consideration and signature. Um, one thing I did negotiate more recently, um, within the terms and I I'd like to go over, I think you have a copy of the. Latest red line. It is it being for, it is being negotiated right now in real time, so the the specifics of it. You know, as we go back and forth, um, we're still working on. So for that reason, I don't want to get too much into into the the nitty gritty and the specific details at this time. But the pieces that I think are important that I reference or 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 talk about um with regards to the. To the deal, um, that's that are sort of maybe changed since our last conversation. Um, one of those is the um. Uh, we added in my language in there that they can make a lump lumps lump sum set payment. If it's decided to be terminated versus the amortized schedule, which we talked about where we paid back over time and that's if that's the case. Um.
Kevin, if I I could just jump in for a second, Marshall, I'm really uncomfortable talking any of the details of this negotiation. In a public session because I I have input I would like to share, but I don't think it should be done in open session. I mean, we're really close now to to finalizing this deal and we haven't as a board. Gone through this language and given any feedback. Um, just as Kevin said, there are things that have changed in here. That are not as much in our favor as previous versions. Um, and and I think we should have an executive session to discuss those. Before anything is finalized because we have not had any discussion on this document as a group.
All right, well, we can't do that at this point, though, correct?
Correct.
So.
I mentioned this the other day. I I really felt like, you know, when I reached that. That we should have an executive session scheduled.
Believe the media was already posted, Matt and Vice Chair.
Another one, we could do Thursday. We don't have to do it tonight. I mean, if if you're coming down to the point where you're going to sign a lease with him and we haven't discussed it at all. Um. I don't know what new things KP is coming back with. There are some things that got taken out of here that I think. Um, are not as favorable to us. What time is your meeting? You you literally were gonna hand him a final copy for him to sign tomorrow?
And I mean, I, we're under very, very tight deadline to try to get this over the finish line. He's a very hard man to get a hold of. So my hope was to have final. Um, if not language, at least um. An understanding with the board of what's in the document and, you know, what if there's pinch points regarding any of the the pieces within it. Um, overall, the document is very consistent to what in our first executive session, which we did have. Uh, where we went through the finer points of what we were gonna do within and what we had laid out and what was an LOI at the time. Um, the document then was was created by KP and then there was, like I said, uh. Like two or three changes in the the first half of the document and basically the. His former lawyer flipped a couple of the comments upside down, which I then. Added in more clarifying language that gave us uh equal rights back um to make it a uh. Uh, it 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 equals sort of responsibility on certain aspects of the contract. Um.
Does anyone else have any concerns about?
Yes. The the only thing I have a concern about is having not seen the latest version, which I. Which isn't so much the issue as talking in a public place about it right now. I I under recorded, I just don't think it's where we should do this. However, I I understand you're trying to get a hold of Peter Flump and it's not easy to do and you have a meeting set up. Um, I guess, how imperative is it that he sees something tomorrow morning or his attorneys? I mean, it could be as simple as a twenty-four hour delay where we get a chance to see what KP comes back with.
Yeah, I mean, that is very, that Mr. Brown's a great point. So this has been forwarded to KP. So the document you have on board docs is. In the administrative component of it is the latest red line, right? And KP has it as well. I'm waiting for their comments. There could be things that are that I added in here, things I tried to kind of meet halfway on that they say you really can't budge on that, Kev. Uh, that's a hard line. You have to go back with that and if that's the case, then that's the case. Um, from the from the legality side of it, right? I guess the business terms tonight was the hope was to kind of. Get through some of those components, just so it could be a generality, but um. We don't have to talk about explicit terms of what the dollar amounts are per se, or if there was um. If the board doesn't feel comfortable speaking to it tonight, we don't have to speak to it.
It's not gonna hamper your advancement of this.
I can't.
And here, here is what I would also add. We are completely. Um, there is no prohibition with you, Kevin, speaking with Lynn. There is no prohibition with you, Kevin, speaking with Cam in a one-on-one scenario. Um, so I I, for instance, am comfortable with the broad strokes of this agreement. Um, I can say that at this point, so I I am not going to be. Uh, concerned a- at this point that I would need to feel the need to be involved in anything in the next day or two. Um, so if we feel as though you can get it accomplished in some allowable one-on-ones. Then I think that that is a perfectly uh. Fine way to go.
Yeah, Marshall, just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not saying I don't, I'm not comfortable Kevin talking to.
No, no, and I'm not suggesting.
I'm not saying that, okay.
Yeah, we we have an agreement in front of us and some people want to look at it more or may have questions about it. You don't want to talk about it in a public meeting. That's perfectly fine. Unfortunately, we can't go into an executive session and no one is suggesting that we can at this point. And so. Inside the boundaries of public meeting law and the kind of timeframe that we're working in, the solution that I see is. Having one-on-one meetings.
Um, yeah, and and by the way, Kevin, I'm perfectly willing to do it this evening. Like, I'm I'm perfectly willing to. Get on a call with you after this meeting.
Absolutely, and this is.
And that and that would, that would get me across, that would get me across a couple of things.
And to be clear, I I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to be clear to anyone who may be listening that this is no effort to hide what we're talking about. It's. Just working within the rules of what we have to do and. You know, in terms of when we would post an executive session, there are rules around that. When we can go into an executive session, there are obviously rules around that and how many people can be involved in a meeting before it. And how many people can be involved in a meeting before it constitutes a public meeting, which is. Up to two board members at a time can meet and it's not a public board, a public meeting, but no more than that. Uh, and nor are we allowed to do some sort of round robin thing where we effectively have a meeting but evade meeting law. So I'm not suggesting that. Uh, either, just.
Right.
Kevin, what time is your meeting with Flump?
Uh, pretty early tomorrow morning. He's going to be over at the shopping center in the morning. So he said, come over, you know, between seven and ten. Anything you said? No, roughly. Um, let's do this. Um, I it. It's just as important where we at where how we get to places where we end up. And I want to make sure that the board. Everyone has an opportunity. We are moving at lightning speed on this because of the town meeting coming up. And so, you know, trying to provide the documentation in real time, uh, it got posted, I think, yesterday, because that's when we got the information back. We made the modifications to it. So. Absolutely fair that the board and you absolutely should have a chance to read through it. And I will absolutely respect the. You know, the desire of the board not to get into any details tonight um on the call around the the. Negotiation. Um, and I would certainly welcome the chance to to speak individually. Similar to how we've done when we have comments on the warrant, right? I'll send send me the comments, everybody, and then we'll embed it and we'll. We'll come back and talk about it at a later date. So um. The fact that we have him tomorrow, I don't want to miss that opportunity. Um, and it's. Quickly. So I I apologize if anybody felt rushed in this moment and having to do this in the setting we're doing it, but it's just kind of how the cards landed it. And the timing associated with it, but.
You couldn't um, you couldn't move this forward with um Mr. Flump tomorrow anyway without KP's feedback. And we don't even have that version yet.
Um, I'm planning to call Matt tomorrow morning at eight o'clock to walk through it with him. I don't expect to have a signature from Pete, although I didn't expect Frank Ivanella to sign the land lease. Last week either, but um I don't expect him to sign. I know he's good with the terms generally and and very close on a couple of other pieces. That we just got to work through. Um, and it might be just kept Matt says you can't do it. I go back to you and say, nope, my lawyer said I can't do this. If we're going to get the deal done, you got to accept it as as presented prior. And maybe that is a deal breaker for him, or maybe he's fine with that. I don't know. But my intent was to provide him a document that he could. Look, I've given him sign renditions. I've given him plot plans. I've given him um. I want to give him my modifications and I can tell my lawyers looking at it, Peter, but give him something to start looking at so that. We can we can get this over the finish line next week. Ish.
I'll have some comments for you tomorrow.
So uh, let's do this. I mean, I will um. Uh, I'll speak with I I, Mr. Chairman, I heard your your comment. Generally, you're okay. Um, I'll make a point to just reach out to everybody um tonight um. Or tomorrow morning to just kind of walk through um what's in the document and take in any individual. You know, won't be any any recommendations coming from it, won't be the recommendation of the board, but it will certainly be individual guidance on sort of. Concerns that I can bring up with Peter when I talk with him tomorrow.
Can you send out to us KP's version as soon as it comes in?
That would be my plan.
Yeah.
But yes.
If you send it out, can you also just shoot a text saying, hey, FYI?
Sure.
You got it.
Yeah.
Kevin, what time tomorrow? Because I I won't be available now, but um, what time's a good time to talk tomorrow? I don't know what time you get in or what time you're talking with Peter or with KP.
So I'm just looking at my schedule tomorrow. I've got an eight thirty. And then I have a nine offsite, so I'm probably going to be seeing him. Pretty early tomorrow morning. Probably going to hurry and head over there at seven thirty or seven forty-five, maybe eight. So I get back, because I don't want to shortchange our conversation. I have. A meeting with um the head of the alcohol licensing board tomorrow morning to discuss um a couple of the things that are going on in that front as well.
So if if you can't get KP's feedback tonight, what can you do with Peter at seven thirty tomorrow morning?
Well, from a lit- what I would do is if I had business feedback from the board. I could buy business feedback to him and say, all subject to KP Law's review of the the legal components of the law of the document.
You said a couple, you referenced a couple of times former lawyer, former lawyer. Um, so obviously there's been a change over there. Has that been? To our benefit or to our detriment?
Clear lines of communication and knowing who's doing what always helps moving things along. Um, apparently, Peter, Mr. Flom's long-term lawyer, who was his lawyer that in the name and the email he gave me the last. On paper, the last time I was in his office, a month and a half ago, um, when we sent that. When Kate, when we sent him the lawyer, the the document, he wrote back, I'm no longer representing Mr. Flump. Um, and.
You don't know, you don't have to get into the heavy duty detail. I'm just trying to figure out directionally, are we adversarial? Are we, were we?
We're good.
Place.
Very great. I met with him last week at the spa- in the old gift horse space for about forty-five minutes and everything was heading in the right direction. I.
Good.
We went from a twenty-year term to a thirty-year term that I.
I saw that I saw that thirty.
Make that modification and he said, um, that's fine with him, which was. Great. Um. So, but again, I don't want to talk business out of respect. I don't want to talk any business.
FYI.
Cam, are you calling Kevin tonight then?
I I would rather see KP's. I've read the red line that we have and, you know, wanted to talk indemnification and a couple of other things, but I mean, it's. If if you prefer me, I'd rather wait for KP if that's the one you're going in with.
Yeah, I would rather see that too, because I don't know if my comments are going to.
Be struck or not.
Exactly. Um. But Kevin, I can call you after this and just tell you generally what my concerns are and then um. Wait for KP's document, but at least give you the general feel of what I'm thinking.
And I I don't know how much um, there's certain things he's very firm on. I know there's other things that I don't think he's as firm on. Um, so you know, your feedback would be welcome, but just a caveat that there might be things. We'll have to make a collective decision if there's concern somewhere by a member of the board. That is something that's a non-starter for Mr. Flom.
Yeah, and you knowing what's the non-starter would be helpful.
Yeah, and and you can do that in a.
But one-on-one.
Start that process in a one-on-one fashion.
Yep.
As a group, you know, he can send out information to us as a group and then we could talk individually. So.
Yes, yeah.
There's nothing stopping him from shooting out information.
Kevin, you have advanced this so well and so deliberately that. I want you to know that anything I'm thinking about is not a deal breaker or is going to grind, you know, grind progress. It's just, I look at a lot of contracts. So I I just, and I know KP does too. I'm not saying they don't, but. Just a few things struck me. I want to talk to you. It's.
Yeah, you'll 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 be able to help me out. Yeah. I think they have the uh, like I said, the business terms are what I'm I'm I, because I I definitely want to hear that perspective, the legal and the business, but the. The small modifications, all of the same, there's nothing, there's been no retrade. Let me put it this way, from what we talked about. A month and a half ago in executive session to the document we have here. It's just that there's been some slight modifications. With what we presented to what they provided back, which does change the term of the deal, the the terms at the end of the day, but. Yeah, you know, there wasn't some sort of um. New golden goose. I need you to give me a, uh, you know, a new car with this, Kev, you know, something like that. It's, there's no sort of like. New thing that they're looking for. It's still the within the conference, friends, what we negotiated thus far. It's just that those terms have sort of modified a little bit to try to. Now we're trying to fit, right? Sure, we can work for.
Well, again, I would say you can send out info to us as a group and then have some one-on-one conversations and then hopefully we can do a lot in the next day or so.
So I, the only document I have right now is the one that's on board docs.
No, no, we're waiting. We're talking.
Understood.
So if you, do we want to wait to talk until KP's comes in? Because I was expecting, I was hoping to have it before the meeting tonight. I did not receive that.
Um. It it does make sense. I know it's not preferable for you, but it it we could have one conversation and they end up striking. Those concerns or adding to those concerns. I. I'm sorry, I know, I know it's not what you want to hear, but.
I mean, you said you were going to call KP as soon as this meeting's over, right?
Well, no, tomorrow morning. I wasn't going to call Matt eight o'clock at night. Sorry.
I would.
I'm not, I'm not going to do that. Um.
Kevin, um, the things that I would share with you, I can share regardless of the KP version because. You could tell me maybe we've already discussed this and KP felt this way and, you know. Kind of um, put things in perspective because I wasn't there for those conversations. So. Just a a high level, I'll tell you where my concerns are and then, you know, we could have a discussion because I'm not looking for the exact wording. Um, from KP on those.
That would be really helpful because that's I. I'm trying to figure out what I'm going to present now to Peter for tomorrow. I'm planning probably to present him. I don't have KP's and by the time I have to get over there first thing in the morning, I'll probably, I really feel strongly, I have to give him something to hold and to look at. Um, so I might give him a red line.
Give him the drawings. Can you give him the drawings?
Oh, yeah, no, we're going to go over the drawings too, for sure, which we're going to go over next as well.
All right. So why don't we move forward to the drawings? I think we have a plan on terms.
Does the board have an objection? To me presenting something to him, even if the board has not had a chance to review it, so that I can say the board hasn't reviewed this. KP hasn't given me comments back, but this is the latest that in tell me, Peter, if there's anything in here. That's a non-starter for you. I mean, visually, I can ask this for on my board, just so I have in the back of my head for the negotiation tomorrow. If there's any non-starters that any individual, again, because we're not taking a vote, we're not discussing it tonight, but any individuals might have concern around. As my vice vice chair just said, some general questions and comments. That would be helpful in that sense that I know at least. There's a direction that certain people want us to stay in or not.
I mean, in my opinion, as long as he knows it's not a final document, then it he he should be able to look at it as much as anyone else. He's packed the party here.
He should, he should, but. If KP comes back with something that he's looked at this and said, yeah, I think we kind of got a deal here and KP comes back with something that.
Falls it.
Irritates him or pulls the rug out from under him or whatever, it's not going to help you.
Unless it's worse to not give him anything.
No, I I hear you.
Unless, Kevin, you feel like there were a couple of issues that you know KP is okay with, so you can conceptually say, we're fine with. Whatever, but don't show him wording. Like, I've made movement on two areas. Um, board hasn't seen it yet, but I I think we're, you know, heading in the right direction and it's showing the drawings.
Yeah, no, I, okay, I'm trying to just process kind of like the next week and a half before town meeting, how to get. To get everything kind of teed up. Now, I'll worry about that. I I have my marching orders. I know I I'll get it done. I'll get it done. I'll get it done. We'll get done. We'll figure it out. Um, and I'll make sure that there's that. I have as much input from the board as I'm negotiating at this point is necessary. We get done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, design. So there's two designs. So we at. The direction of the board, we engaged before the signing of the lease, a designer who we're now under contract with. Uh, Matt has been out a number of times, met with us now two times, and he's he's. Very much fast-tracking. I'm calling some favors on this one to get this design done in time for town meeting. Um, and also for Peter, because I think he's going to want to see it before he signs anything. Um. Design one, if you click on that, uh, was his first idea, which is um a rat, you'll notice in the design there that. There is an entrance into the plaza and all this information can be found publicly on board docs for anybody who would like to to take a look. Um, outside the board, obviously. Um, you'll see what we did there is the between, mentioned earlier, the the. The area that we'll be leasing is uh T-Hops building, the property line right there next, about two feet off of the off the building. To the property line, which is about six feet off the prop- of the building line of M and T Bank. We would take the entirety of that all the way up to where the. Um, the two driveways, the current driveways open up into the bigger parking lot. What we would do is then we'd probably keep the curb line on the right-hand side, the M and T side. And we take down the existing scraggly trees and replace them with uh four or so new trees. The sign for the plaza will be relocated to be in front of those trees. Um, and and on the opposite side of the where the it's currently located from that road. And then um, we would expand, we probably basically polarize from that curb all the way across the T-Hop. And all the way up to the end of the property line to the frontage area. And with that, we would redesign a new curb line. That would go about four feet roughly from where the existing curb line is. Um. On the left-hand side of that entrance that you're looking at right now. And behind the second half of that entire space would then be our municipal parking lot. We can um, one I, one item that might, uh, Chief Hobbie, when he reviewed this had issue is people pulling back into that roadway, that access point. Um, and that was noted in something that um. That's important. But you'll notice it gets us eight spots in the lot and it gets us three spots on the road for additional parking downtown. Um. And then in this design, what you'll see is you move into the plaza itself. So between the parking spaces and the road. You have a design where you have this open area with a planter in the middle and you have this the this half circle field stone wall that runs around the edge. That perimeter of the circle. In there, inside the circle, you'd have concrete, probably some brick inlay, maybe some granite accents in there as well. And then on the the upper left quadrant, you have um smaller tree or brush that's buffering that behind that wall. Um. Idea for this is that you have an open space that you can walk right into. Um, it allows us to beautify that area. Um, but like I've always said, the primary reason for doing this is municipal parking, which is behind there and would allow. Um, people to 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 use that. The reason we need municipal parking is because. We're going to go back out to RFP in the next month and a half on the highway garage and if successful. The municipal parking lot there goes away and so we'll need to relocate. And historically, part of the reason that I believe Mr. Flump put the stanchions up in the Jersey barriers prior to that, so he did not want people parking there and using other businesses. So I, based on that, I know that historically that area before those barriers were put up. Were used for municipal parking in a sense in his lot. So we're we're. Building the lot where people intuitively want to park anyway, which makes a lot of sense. That's design one.
Did it's chief because spatially I have trouble. So is that plenty of um space to drive in and drive out? Uh, since this is a brand new traffic um. It layout, are there like dotted lines in between there to let people know it's an in and an out? Is it wide enough?
So you need twenty-six feet, I believe it is. It being, Matt knows with numbers. He's designing this. That's why the curb on. Left-hand curve in the entrance has to be expanded to meet uh um. Roadway standards, like driveways have standards that need to be adhered to. So we need to expand that if it's going to be two-way traffic. It likely be a line painted. Down the middle that clarifies this two-lane traffic. It'd also be a blue P sign located somewhere at the entrance, maybe on this, in, you know, down, we don't know exactly where, but maybe located. Down by where uh the sidewalk area is pointing into the lot as a. And then a secondary P would have to point towards where the parking lot itself is, so people know that that's where the part public parking would be. Um.
So chief is not really high on this particular parking design. I I can see what he means. Driving out, you're going to be right in the. Uh, path. No one's going to assume someone's pulling out right into them.
Agreed. So that's, that's, that is, yes. That's, that was the feedback that the initial, you know, quick look at it from the chief um in the last couple of days. Uh, that is the feedback I received um on that. And then if if you pull up the um option two, um. This version has a two-section um park, in essence. Uh, on the right-hand side, M and T bank side, it's very much the same um as what you see right now, uh, which you saw in the first first version. Uh, with the sign being located there and new trees being planted. On the. Parking area, you'll notice that this parking area is on the backside of the park, not on the side of the park, but on the backside of the park. Um, and that it's it's faces toward the parking area, faces towards the park itself. Um, so that it takes you away from the travel lane in and out. It gives better sightlines. The design there, we talked about this, we could probably carve that island up a little bit and both sides, it probably fit at least seven spaces in that for municipal lot. Um, and then in the front, again, you're gaining three parking spaces on on Main Street. As for the design itself, there's two sections. The front section would be about an eighteen-inch field stone wall. It has sharp corners. It's it's rectangular. Um, in the middle of it, we're thinking about putting brick inlay um for that area and that area would be where we could put, you know, outdoor dining tables with umbrellas. Really activate that space. It could be a place where someone grab a coffee at Zumiez or grab a slice of pizza at T and um T-Hop. Um, or bring from Alex's or wherever they're coming from or a new restaurant, right? Um, eventually, so. Um, it would be a place where people could activate that on on-street space, uh, placemaking. Um, it would be a place where people could activate that on on-street space, uh, placemaking is really important. That's a big part of what we told Matt, they need to create space for people to gather, um, a center of the downtown. And so after you go into that first section where it might be where you can grab, you know, a place to sit and eat, you go into a back section. Back section, originally the idea Matt suggested putting grass, but as we all know, it's opposite, we don't have irrigation, we don't have water ability. To keep it green and looking nice, so what we did is we transitioned that to a little bit more of a hardscape. Concept where you'd have a maybe like a brick runway right at that entrance going down the middle. You've got two egresses to the parking lot behind it at the top um that you've walked down, maybe a concrete. Walkway uh poured sidewalk down. On either side of the park, you'd have benches um in other areas where you could. You can reflect, I call it a reflecting space. But the neat thing with this concept, especially in the back that I love is that. You can make this a very interesting activated space, you could put public art back there, you could put a giant chessboard or or. Uh, checkers board, you could put um, you could have a concert back there. And have the COA come and set up chairs and and listen to a concert in the middle of the downtown, which is so cool to think about. And I think it would be a really great thing for the downtown to do things like that. You could also have a period of the summer or the spring where you have movable planters you put down there with each of the garden clubs planting. You know, their their flowers in those planters for a period of time, so we can celebrate our garden clubs. And beautify that space. Um, I envision this, not the place that's like eat a sandwich could, but you certainly can come back there, read a book. Um, and enjoy that space um, you know, for like a concert activation.
Roughly, like when we're looking at each of those, the front triangle and then that back area.
Think we estimated that that back area is roughly either forty or fifty by forty or by fifty, roughly about a. That's roughly what the size that would be.
Okay.
And the front area is just slightly smaller in this case. Hmm, but so then. We went to ECDC um and Monday we got feedback there, only because of timing, it wasn't. You know, looking to put select board second or anything like that, but it was just, we had the opportunity because we got the design Monday afternoon and we had that meeting that night. It was a really great conversation, we got some really great feedback from the members of ECDC and. Um, but. The one point that was brought up that seemed to be pretty consistent was that second design, people similarly liked the activation of the space. The sharp edges on that front area um. It it felt like you're building a patio for T-Hop, it didn't feel like it was inviting, like it wasn't an open space you could walk into. And so um, the suggestion was to actually take. The back part of option two and the front part of option one. And 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 mirror those together and when you marry them together, I kind of. It's very rough, I did it, it wasn't professionally done, so please, that's my disclaimer, but the third option that you see in there um is. Attempting to kind of give a visual of what that might look like.
Do you have a third option?
It's in the word document.
Oh, oh, I see it. Okay, yeah, yeah.
I like that one, if you can make the space work, it seems like we've just added space, so.
Well, yes, I mean, it's it's, yeah, T-Hop, if you see on the left, just grew by about like thirty three. Um, but what we can do with this is just, it's very. It it's it's intended to give you a sense, so I would say. You know, talking through this with some people, ECDC and others. That planter in the middle of that circle really breaks that space up, so you can't really see across, you can't gather as much, you can't use that space in a very functional way. You can't put tables out there in a really systematic way. The idea would be to maybe take that circle, maybe make it a little bit smaller. Um, get the, take out that that uh planter in the middle. You know, put some combination, again, a brick with so, so you know you're entering into something, but it's it's wide open, so it's very inviting for people to to enter into that space. It's not like you have a wall that you have to work your way around. Um, we still put tables out there during the summer and umbrellas and and make an inviting space for people to to sit and possibly eat or or drink or whatever it be. And then in the back, you'd have sort of a similar sort of entryway to the back, where then you just opens up into that space where you could do sort of a rotating art. And beautification and concert, whatever we want to do with it, right? We have that space that we can really make that activated. Um, I sent that over to Matt um as well um. Early Tuesday morning, when I put this together, I sent that over to him. And uh, he received it, hasn't done anything with it because I told him to wait until we had the select board's feedback. Um, and get a sense if either of these three ideas are. Jiving, if there if there are things that you think might work, if there's comments on. Or preference for any of these, what we're gonna do is tomorrow I have a call with Matt at three o'clock. Um, to go over the feedback, overall feedback we've received this week um. From from the ECDC and from yourselves, and I have. Brought this to a few other members of the of of the team here at Town Hall, as well as a couple other of uh people in the community that have been actively involved with. A lot of the downtown revitalization um and and some of the planning exercises that we've done to get some feedback, so. Uh, one other point I will make, and I want to make sure this is said because I think it's really important um. Trash came up, lighting came up, bike racks came up um. And with regards to trash, um. You know, I still believe in a carry and carry out policy is is the best for beautification and typically it works. What we would do when we introduce the park and it's completed is I'd work with the superintendent Wilds and coming up with a regular um. Monitoring the park for anybody who's leaving anything behind, um, you know, bucket, stick, walk around, make sure everything's clean on a regular basis. And secondarily, you know, with different spaces, all the trees are gonna be low in size because they need the sightlines to the plaza. The businesses do, um, and so we wouldn't grow anything massive through the block from the plaza. Uh, the green would just accentuate the space. Uh, but there is still the opportunity for people to, you know, to go back there, so we would put um. I would ask Chief Hobbie to make sure, you know, during the shift, if somebody's gonna do some paperwork. Park their car back there, the police cruiser, just to keep an eye on it, um, you know, during different times of the day, just get, have the guys park and. And women park and just walk through the plaza and the people there just say hello, just have a presence, we do that in the summer with the bike with the bike trail. Having officers on bikes uh riding up and down the rail trail, so that.
Time does Proctor let out?
Yes. Yes, um. So the um, th- those are some of those, and then in addition to that, you know, it's really important that we we kind of make the whole thing. We did the exercise of DHB, which talked about how we were gonna have streetscape design. Brick, granite, black accents. Yeah, we would have black benches presumably, we would have um this, we'd order maybe a couple more solar poles. Um, to to add and put into the area, we will need to light the area. Um, as it's a place for a public place for people to gather, so we put some of the solar lights and the solar lights are important because we want to tie it into the lights on the street. Um, and then um, we'd also look to put. Um, I think it was a suggestion from the ECDC, and I see no reason why we wouldn't do this, put some bike racks there as well, just so people who are coming off the bike uh rail trail. Or people in the community are just coming downtown on their bicycles, um, have a place to put it and encourage people to to use that uh form of transportation throughout town if they can.
And to your point, Marshall, about the kids from Proctor, you look over at Country Farms, the bikes are everywhere. They just get off them and drop them and you wouldn't want this whole space just cluttered with bikes so that people really couldn't. Utilize the space well.
And and to be clear, I'm not, uh, as a father of kids that were in Proctor only a year ago, I love kids that age, they're lovely. Mine happen to smell a little bit, but on the whole part, they're 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 lovely. Uh, but I honestly think that, you know, just having a presence there isn't to. Deter from fun and gathering, just to encourage. You know. Good behavior. Uh, I will say this, that uh I I initially was a fan of the. Uh, I I think it's option number one, the more squared off one, um, more for the back. Part of it than I was the front part of it. Uh, the front part of it honestly reminds me a little bit. In as much as I can envision it in drawings like this, of the Smith Memorial in the cemetery, you know, that is something that is squared off and has a couple benches in it. And I don't think we want to park in the downtown to mimic what is a beautiful. Space, but it's a space in the cemetery, right? So I always loved the round part, but I was preferring the other design just because. It gave us more park overall, which I thought was terrific, so for me, this is a perfect. Uh, this option three is a hundred and seventy-eight percent the way I would want to go with this.
I like the way Kevin did this because when Kevin and I talked, I I said I didn't like the. The round version that was first presented because the seats were built in and they were round. That was it, like you had no option, you had to stare at people across the round area, you couldn't gather a couple of chairs or, you know, sit at the table, so. With that gone now and it's just freestanding tables and chairs and those bushes wouldn't be there, you know, dividing the back, that would that would be open. Um, I like this one too, that's.
And and the roundness to me is just, it's more welcoming, it it's, I I don't know what it is about it, but just. A circular courtyard, if to use that kind of terminology, that just beckons me in, so this looks like a place I want to go and hang out.
And the back part kind of um tames it down, so it's not too modern looking. I I, I'm probably saying this too harshly, but I didn't want to put a silk hat on a pig, you know, we don't want to put the Taj Mahal. Um, there, you know, um, so you want something that's somewhat. Engaging but simple and in keeping with what's around it.
Yep.
And I think the the circular is perfect for when we get the bronze bust of Marshall put together, raise the funds in a few years. No.
You're gonna get a liquor license for that fundraiser.
And what's the bust for?
It's for me, it's good, we're gonna put a big, my head is almost big enough as it is already.
I'm not sure we have enough bronze for that.
I I, it sounds from uh those who have weighed in that uh we like the the hybrid design.
Well, in the design world, we call that Frankenfitting, so every time you show a client a number of options, inevitably they take a piece of this. And they take a piece of this and, you know, put it all together.
Already.
Matt's good and Matt will, Matt will massage it, he's a good guy, he'll take care of it and uh it's. Pretty damn exciting to see where we are right now, Kevin, it's it's really exciting.
Yeah, it's great. If if he can make sure that those bike racks get in and then place the lighting in as well, because I love that idea, Kevin, about the solar lights kind of. Showing it's part of what was on Main Street and it's kind of been brought into this to make it. All part of the downtown.
I I think too, the um. I I can't emphasize how um. How much it's appreciated by by Matt, the expedite this, once I give, we give feedback tomorrow. He said he's gonna pop this into a CAD immediately and start bringing it out of the ground, so you can kind of see some three-dimensional imagery of it. Um, he's also gonna provide us with some unit counts from a design standpoint, and I would say this again as much as we need to, but I'll say it now. Very firmly, it's gonna be an estimate based on a design that's not final, so that, but it's a design that'll be close to concept, right? Um, or concept that's close to to being finalized and. It'll give us a ballpark for town meeting. Of what that cost will be and what the design will look like, so we can present it, but we'll, again, at town meeting where handings out, we'll say, just remember, this is a concept. It's not, it's not the final design, um. But that's, that's, that's next steps and he knows the urgency and the timelines and he's gonna be working in in. Expedite fashion to help us get this over the finish line in time.
Just say for the um e- expense, whatever the estimate is, it's gonna be. Fairly tight, we can still say it's an estimate, but it can't be like a hundred to two hundred thousand, I think that's just. Too broad and people will say it sounds like nothing.
We'll have a, we'll have an exact spec sheet, we'll say like. Fifty-six linear yards of granite, um, you know, X amount of brick. Boom, 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 right? And we'll have an estimated cost, we'll have an estimated amount and then. The plan is to take that, you know, over the final week before town meeting, give it to T uh TCUs, do some work in town for us. As uh, we do this all the time when we go out to bid, we have a vendor we work with to give us a a preliminary number on something. Uh, there's no commitment to the town to them to be the the vendor of choice, or they they it's. Very common, they'll take a look and give us a price to to use as an estimate. Um, so we'll have, based on real unit costs. You know, it'll be a one hundred and seventy-nine thousand fifty-two dollars, you know. But it it will be tight in that sense, but it will be subject to change based on final design specifications.
And that would be, it it would include whatever paving we have to do, I mean, it's everything, that's project cost.
And one other point, we did confirm the water line to the lateral, it's a main because it goes into the facility off the main, but the main that goes into the. Um, property. Um, is right on the property line on T um T-Hop. Um, on the Flom property, so from a design standpoint, any hardscape, we're gonna try to avoid that. Water main, which actually could save us a lot of money if we don't have to replace it, because if the line was right down the middle. We'd probably replace the water lateral into the property or the main into the property. Um, if we're gonna put a bunch of investment and hardscape on top of it, because. You don't want that to explode a year after we build it and all of a sudden everyone's like, oh my gosh. Um, so we make sure the infrastructure underneath was brought to speed, but in this case, based on design, it actually might be something we can avoid is the cost of replacing that line.
Yeah, I would say at all costs, avoid that line.
Yeah, yeah, we're we lucked out. Lucked out location wise, for sure, um.
Sounds great.
Feedback's fantastic, thank you, everybody, this is exactly what I accomplished with this, so I can go back to Matt, keep it moving. Um, and then like I said, I'll I'll figure out tonight and tomorrow morning. Uh, the approach with Peter, when I meet with him tomorrow, to keep things going there.
Kevin, I'm in the car tomorrow morning about six fifteen and I'll be at the airport till about eight, so. Any any window in there is a hundred percent fine if if you want, if you want to talk, or if you want me to grab you for ten minutes right now, I can.
Um, I I know. My vice chair, uh, Mr. Brown both offered to speak tonight, I could talk to my vice chair, if it's a quick ten-minute kind of high-level, quick rundown and then I could. Call over to you, Mr. Brown, if that works.
Yeah, give me a shot.
Actually, i- if you don't mind doing Cam first, if Cam, are you very long, do you think, no?
I'm I'm, I am five minutes max.
Oh, okay, so if you don't mind.
Kevin, if you let me lead, Kevin, then we're five minutes, alright?
And then as soon as you're off with Cam, just give me a buzz, that will give me a few minutes to get downstairs, get a couple things done before you call.
No problem, that sounds good. Um, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Jackson, any. Any thoughts on your ends before?
Well, I'm gonna be hard pressed.
I think, I think option three is the best choice.
I think he means for the contract with Flom.
Oh, I I will um, I will have some input for you tomorrow, Kevin.
Okay.
I'm gonna be hard pressed to get something with this timeline, in all honesty.
So, you want to just talk about high level, what the terms are and any changes from the last?
Sure, that's worth it.
Alright, are you available tonight, if I call you later?
Uh, yep.
Okay. I'll go Cam.
Right, call me up.
Air, and then I'll go Mr. McDonald.
Sounds good, do you need an emotion, Marshall?
I would like one of those.
Before we do. Before we do though, uh, just to remind, we we have our select board listening session. This Saturday. Um, and it's been a while since we did scheduling. But hopefully I've got this still correct, that we have Lynn and Cam.
Oh, I knew you were gonna say that.
No, Raphael, remember I told you a long time ago I had my niece's shower, I sent you actually the invitation. That, um, I couldn't attend and now I've got something even better because I'm gonna have a grandson, so I'm gonna be in New Jersey, so. I couldn't make it anyway, but now I really can't make it.
Raphael, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be out of town now, I mean, I have been at the library the two of the last three Saturdays doing this, but I'm I'm gonna be out of town now, I apologize.
Okay, then, the only other person that listed as available is Boyd. Um, so. I don't know if you want to do one, that'll put you on one, two, three, four, five in a row.
I don't care.
Alright.
Well, that was Boyd's choice, I've been trying to get in and.
I was there, I was there by myself the last time, so I was sacrificed the last time.
Yes, you were.
I can do it again.
I'll be on a plane to Florida, otherwise I would have been very, very happy to uh join.
And, right, and I am not around either, so.
Alright, Boyd, you're on your own, man, if anyone can handle it, it's you.
Ten thirty?
Yes.
There you go.
I'll be there.
Alright.
Thanks Boyd, sorry, everybody, I apologize.
All you working stiff have things to do.
Yeah, I'm flying to vacation is what I'm.
Oh, yeah, you're, yeah.
We are going to uh the beautiful Palm Beach area, the same resort we've been to, uh, this will be our third year in a row.
Cool.
Where we.
Every time we turn around, he's going on vacation.
That's just not true.
It's because he works for the state now, oh wait, I can't say that, no, I guess.
Hey, anyone want to do a motion?
I wanna run, um, motion to adjourn.
Alright, Kevin, give me a call.
Okay, discussion, hearing none, Mr. McDonald.
Hi.
Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
Mr. Brown has already voted aye, because he's already on his way out, but say it again for us for the rest. Mr. Brown has already voted aye, because he's already going his way out, but say it again for us for the record. Yeah, Ms. Berbutes.
Hi.
And Mr. Hooks and I, we're adjourned.